Even though I, we are still waiting for a couple of more people, I will slowly start. And I'm not sure how many of you know each other and how many of us don't know each other. But today's important guest is Christopher Marte from the City Council District One. And that area as of now includes Washington Square Park. So Christopher Marte, thank you very much for being here. And I'm not sure how long you can stay in this meeting. But I heard like maybe the first hour, Max, could you clarify with that?
Yeah, I think you have hours, sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, I could stay until 3:00 P. M.
Okay, thank you very much. And also, I'm gonna mute everyone besides the person who's speaking to increase the audio quality. So thank you for your cooperation. I'm gonna start with the sharing of this video about the, just general issue explained. In the first ever meeting I had with the literature director before Max, there was a person called Ian Wan, who was in the position of literature director before Max. And I know this is gonna be a repeat for many of us, but because we have Christopher here, I think I wanna share this video again. And I know some of you already saw this, but please bear with me. Do screen recording. And if you don't hear anything, please let me know. Okay, so this is the first meeting I had last summer with Ian Wan. And at the beginning of the meeting, the general situation is explained, so I'm just gonna clear it.
I can't hear anything.
Oh. Uh, is audio not going? No.
It's very quiet.
I'm not hearing anything either.
Okay, thank you for telling me that. Let's see. I will try that again. Think it works this time. It's all about street performers in, mainly in Washington Square Park and New York City, who are harassed by either NYPD or Park Rangers because of the sound amplifiers in many cases. I understand if, you know, it's super loud until like midnight, 1:00 A. M., 2:00 A. M., but like it happens like anytime, like under the daylight, 2:00, 2:00 P. M., 3:00 P. M., doesn't matter. That is not fair for artists performing on the street in New York City, especially when New York City takes advantage of street artists a lot. This is the project from last summer. This was called No Stopping New York and it calls recovery for all. This project was New York City Mayor's Office nonprofit advertisement after the lockdown time from COVID and showing city recovering from the severe COVID time. My photo was used like this, and this is myself performing in Washington Square Park. This image was all over the bus stop walls and kiosk walls and like just any places to see those images. Since this is nonprofit project, I didn't receive any money for it. I did agree with it, so I'm not saying that, oh, I wanted money. I really don't care about money, but I'm just saying that this is how city take advantage of our art. And they don't pay anything to me, and still they harass me even after this project.
Hey, my name's Jordan. I think really just what speaks to me is that I think people should have the ability to have control over the spaces that they live in. And so it's most important to me, aside from the beauty of a street performer performing, is that the people who live in this community are able to have some say, have their voice heard over how they'd like their space to be treated.
Good afternoon. I just like to say a few words. I support Connie here. She does tremendous work. She makes this park a better place. What they do does not disturb people, makes things better. They're not, they don't have acoustics that are, you know, causing old people like me to suffer hearing loss. That's not an issue with them. They, again, they anchor this park, they make things better for everyone, so I support them.
I'm a lifelong resident. I live on the park. I'm an artist myself. In many ways, I was a photographer for 20 years. I, some of my favorite memories are in the summers and going around the center of the park, finding these pockets of musicians. Literally pockets of musicians, like beautiful kind of medley of sound without overpowering each other, very respectful. It's a huge part of the community. I'm also a resident, so I'm affected, for better or for worse, mainly for better, by the sound in the park. And this doesn't necessarily mean the buskers. It's been a really intense time. I actually was really, was happy to have there be such, in certain ways, such an explosion of energy in the park during the past number of years. I also think that it's important for not just expectation management and residents and performers and tourists, but for the safety of the buskers who are being harassed, to have a set of standards, standards and expectations, to have respectful balance and boundaries. And again, to protect all of our expectations and our physical, you know, physical beings, not me as much as them. Konami had proposed this 9:00 A. M. to 10:00 P. M. That is delightful. I would love that. I've never heard Konami's music from my home. But yeah, I mean, it would be lovely to have, you know, a reasonable time for it to end. The 85 decibel level is wonderful. I appreciate that as a resident. I also think that, personally, I don't think that there should be police in the park. I think that they're harmful. Parks Department, I've also seen being potentially as harmful is what I've witnessed. However, they are there right now. And I think that if they are there, there are needs, these regulations and expectations need to be in place so that they can't be predatory and violent and harassed. I've seen it. I've seen six cops ascend on Konami and other people, seen them wait for there to be like a tiny infringement of something that is already, again, the issue is that it's not very clear, right? It's not clear what is allowed and what isn't. I think that if the police are gonna be there, they need to enforce the safety of the buskers as well. If, if there is violence around them, I have noticed that there is a really beautiful community. I've also learned about the extensive community from Konami. And really, the community of the creatives and the artists who are there are the ones who are regulating the safety of the park, despite the police and Park Ranger presence. So I think that if they're gonna be there, they should be working in support with the people who are risking their lives to keep the park safe. There are intimidation, there are tickets, there's bullying. I would be interested in knowing why, you know, it comes from somewhere, it can be implicit, it can be racism, it can be all of these things, but, or prejudice. But I'm wondering how much money the city is making off of these creatives who are such a huge part of this community? And let's be honest, they're not treated with respect as a creative. It's really hard to be a creative human in New York City. I think it's important to have very clear, both to the permit holders and to the enforcers, what is allowed and what isn't. And they should have an opportunity to say, I need to work six days a week. I mean, they're hustling. And they're not just hustling, but they're benefiting, they're enriching my life and many of the peoples around me.
I've lived in New York City almost all my life and used to come to the park.
Okay, for now I stop here. Hope you heard the audio. Did you hear the audio? Okay, thank you very much. So that was just the summary of, that meeting specifically was focused on performers. So we were talking about the amplification and performance situation. And also, we heard a voice from the resident who lives right next to Washington Square Park. Yeah, and I also wanted to follow up a couple of questions from the last meeting because some questions we got left unanswered. So for the answer asking about if NYU asks any enforcement against artists, especially around the beginning of the semester, you know, like, the question was, is there any record of NYU asking enforcement to eliminate artists? And I think Grace, you can clarify that, but there's no such record, right? Could you explain a little bit?
I've asked the question and yeah, I've been told no. You know, I obviously don't have access. Nothing like that has ever come through us. Obviously, for the conservancy, it would just be a request message again, but yeah, no.
Okay, thank you very much. And also, another question was if Washington Square Association funds any enforcement or the recent increase of enforcement. And as far as I heard from Grace, the answer is no. But John, if you could clarify with that, that would be great because in the last meeting, that was kind of unclear. Oh, sorry, you need to unmute yourself. Thank you.
Okay, yes, no, Washington Square Association does not provide any funds for enforcement.
Great, thank you so much. Great, and I was hoping to have Eric by now, but I think I'll just go ahead to the current situation, because that's the next thing to agenda. So there are many things going on in the park apparently. And one of the things was that some publications from different media, mainly New York Post and The Village Sun, which is a local newspaper, reports about Washington Square Park quite often. And I wanna share with that. Let's see. So this is one of the recent news articles published. And the headline says, "New York City Drug Dealers Now Masquerading As Artists In Washington Square Park." And it takes a little while to load the video. But so the video caption was actually now revised and changed. Before, it was quite misleading because... So this is the video. I'm not sure if I can play. Don't need a sound. But it's an artist protesting against over enforcement and walking around the Washington Square Park. However, the caption for that video was originally, "Out of the drug deal, crafty Washington Square Park drug sellers are disguising themselves as drug art dealers." And I contacted the reporter to change the caption because it's misleading and like as if like those artists were a drug, like also drug dealers, which is not true. So I told them to change the caption, and now the caption says, "Artists in Washington Square Park protesting." So that's more accurate. But I'm not sure like what motivated them to write this headline and write this article and entire thing.
Because it's August and there's not a lot of other news going on right now, would be my guess.
Okay, good to know. Um, but yeah, that is like something we're dealing with as well, like, like, yes, we're dealing with actual enforcement and like, it just like, it changes on a daily basis. Like some days, they don't bother us at all, and then some other day, like they harshly cracking down on us. So it's been very inconsistent and very unpredictable. And then on top of those, like onsite enforcement issue, you know, like, people kind of like mixing up the drug dealers and artist vendors in the article like this. So I just wanted to point it out that I don't appreciate that, like mixing up those two very different people, artists are artists and drug dealers are drug dealers. And what residents want to solve in the park is safety issue. And I already heard from the Washington Square Conservancy and like different people that the main issue, the residents around the park want to focus is actual like crimes, like you know, the stabbing happened in the west corner and another dead body found in the southwest corner and those things.
We generally, sorry, we typically get like safety concerns from folks. So yeah, it's that kind of crime, but also, you know, low, lower level things like the hardscapes in Washington Square Park are designated pedestrian pathways. So you're not actually allowed to bike or skateboard or scooter or anything like that. That is a lot of the complaints we get, is a lot of people concerned about the skateboarding.
Yeah, I was about to get to that point, sorry. So I was about to mention three things. So one is skateboarding and, you know, safety issue on the pedestrian sidewalk side. And the drug issue and more like fatal issues like stabbing and all those crimes. Did I get correct, Grace? Those three are the main focus, I thought.
Yeah, so when we get, so when we get, you know, concerns from complaints, however you wanna put it, from the community through to us, that is the gist of them, yes.
Okay. Thank you very much. And also, I don't know, I was about to have Eric, but I will explain the vendor situation as much as possible. I will do my best. So because myself is not a vendor, so I'm exactly not knowing the situation around them. But as far as I hear is the distance rule in Washington Square Park, like 50 feet away from the fountain and everything, and it pushes artists away from the fountain. And, but they were still able to be there in the very out edge of the circle until yesterday. And this afternoon, like very recently, he told me that his artist friends in the park right now is pushed even more away further from the fountain. And like, it really feels like a threat for artists, to be honest. Because like, I just see that, like, I don't know who exactly, but like someone is really trying to eliminate artists. I don't know the exact intention, but like, that's how vendors are feeling right, right now, especially with this current situation going this afternoon today. So when Eric ever comes back to the meeting, I want him to clarify things more. But I just letting you know the current situation ongoing right now today. So that was just general idea of like the more like current situation rather than the last summer. And now, I know we personally talked with this already, but Max, if you could report about your meeting with the NYPD Six Precinct and how it went and what you discussed and sharing with us, that'd be great.
Sure, yeah, so I can, I can talk about it, I don't know if you want to, but I can.
Yeah, I can, I can start and you can fill in the gaps, Max. So we, you know, we talked to the commanding officer of the sixth precinct, relayed a lot of the frustration that Max has told me from the artists and certain sellers. And, and they also gave us some feedback of what they've been hearing and seeing. And, you know, especially with that New York Post article coming out, I think there is a lot of confusion in certain aspects of like who's an artist sometimes and who's like selling weed or selling other stuff. And I think that's why we really need a public meeting where we get everyone to, to have a conversation and just to understand what's happening in the park. Because, you know, sometimes the NYPD might not enforce something, but the PEP officer, the Park Rangers might enforce something or vice versa. And so it brings a lot of confusion to, to everyone that's at the park, whether you're a performer or not. In addition, there's also a lot of officers that come from other precincts to the park. And I think that does, you know, that causes a lot of harm because people know the artists here, right? And if you have a random officer coming from, you know, Brooklyn or the Bronx to the park, then they don't know the people who have been performing here for decades or selling items here for decades. And so I think we just need to like really have a public meeting to do some sort of, some sort of level setting with everyone involved. And, you know, I know Max has talked about this before, but we also wanna hear from the vendors, some recommendations that you guys would like. So when we, you know, do our outreach, whether it's through a letter or setting up a meeting with parks, especially with the commissioner or the borough commissioner, we can discuss ways to, to make it easier for people to be there, right? Whether you're a performer or selling legal items at the park. And so I know Max wants to continue those conversations just to create a list before we reach out to them. And Max, do you wanna cover anything else that I haven't touched from that meeting?
I think you got most of it. Yeah, I think the big, yeah, most of the meeting was just us trying to get them to agree to a meeting with all of you. And so that was most of our discussion with them. So yeah, you know, we're, we're working on it.
And, you know, I think, I think like I said, it's really important to have everyone there because I feel like if, you know, if one entity or one stakeholder is not there, then we're gonna have to just do another meeting. So I'd rather just have everyone around the table discussing their experiences, discussing what they like to see in the park. And then we can create next actions from that meeting.
Sorry, I have a question. So I know Max told me that the NYPD didn't want to come to this meeting, for example. So they're being very hesitant so far. And I also sent another email to Max saying that I could you just ask them one, one more time? I know you already asked. And then, did you any reply or any reaction from that after that? And if meeting could happen like around when that might be able to happen?
Well, we're, we're trying to make, have the meeting as soon as possible. It, it is a little complex scheduling, everyone's schedules at the same time. So we're, we're working on the logistics of that. You know, we just talked about the meeting just a week and a half ago with them. So we're, we're reaching out to every single group to see what date and time works. And we'll definitely relay that information to you guys as soon as we can to make sure that any artist or vendor has a seat at the table. You know, they, they were reluctant to join the Zoom meeting, but they are open to having an in-person meeting. And so we think that's, that's good movement.
I see your message, Grace. I know you're also trying to, you know, have a conversation with NYPD. And did you get any reaction from them as a conservancy person?
I haven't heard back yet, no. I did though have a question slash suggestion for you, Konami, and the other artists. Has, has there been any talk of coordinating and attending one of the precinct community meetings? The, the Sixth Precinct holds their different sectors. I think Washington Square Park is Sector B, but I'm not 100% sure. I can follow up and double check. But they have public meetings already, and maybe if a large enough group of you guys were to attend that, you could, you know, take the direction of that conversation that way. You know, just if, if we are, if you are unable to get them in any other capacity, you know, they do have those, those meetings for a reason. This is sort of exactly it.
Yeah, actually, me and Max tried to find out when those Sixth Precinct community meetings are happening. And they, so we checked the website and it says last Wednesday of every month, which is today. But they say, oh, the meeting is on Zoom and there's no Zoom link found in the website. So I am not exactly sure yet, but I, I tried to, you know, join the meeting as well. But for August, like Max told me that it's most likely not happening. So what I can do for now is checking the last Wednesday of September if they're gonna do any that kind of meeting or not. So yeah, but thank you for that, and we are, we are trying and keep looking. Robert? You need to unmute yourself, sorry.
All right, can you hear me now?
Yes.
All right. I think we're going about this with all due respect to Konami, exactly the wrong way. The police are the effect, the police are not the cause. I've been vending since I'm 11. The police do vending enforcement in every single park in New York City. It's not just in Washington Square Park. I've been arrested countless times by the PEP officers in a park. So the idea that this is just some kind of aberration, that the, the Sixth Precinct is just freelancing some kind of war against artists, it's simply not the case. The rules exist. The police, whether we like it or not, their job is to enforce rules. If you wanna change the situation, you gotta change the rules. They're not gonna let you just change the, the rules in Washington Square Park if you do it informally. Let's say everybody in this meeting and the head of the Fifth Precinct got together and decided, oh, let's just lay off the artists. Well, as soon as there's a new captain, a new mayor, a new council member, it's gonna be changed back again. If we can get the Parks Department to agree to amending the rules, and there's really only two rules that have to be changed to stop this problem in Washington Square Park. That's the 50-foot rule and the 12-foot clearance from the edge of your sidewalk rule. Those two rules make the entire park illegal to vend in. The other issue is that at least half the people vending in Washington Square Park, I looked at a walkthrough video yesterday that somebody put online. Half the people are selling things that are illegal to sell in a park. I'm not even talking about the pot dealers. They're selling pocketbooks, clothing, candles, crystals, all kinds of stuff. It's nice stuff. I don't personally have any problem with it, but it's illegal to vend it in a park. So rather than targeting artists who have a constitutional and a legal right, even according to the park rules, to vend in every single park, the police should be going after the people that are there illegally, as well as obviously skaters and bikers that are risking people's safety and so on, rather than going after the artists. But the bottom line is, until you change the rules, the artists are not gonna be safe from harassment.
Thank you. We do have, at least performer have a proposal of the changing rules as well. And I'm not sure about the, I was not sure about the clear proposal about the vending rule changes. But as Robert said, taking away the distance rules will definitely help. So if there's any way to change that distance rule, that's gonna definitely help the vending, art vendors for sure. Sorry, I saw your message, Zach, right now. Do you wanna speak about the issue right now?
Hey, guys, this is Zach. I'm an art vendor at the park. I've been doing portrait drawings in the park for the past five years since 2018. Yeah, so I just kinda got caught up on the situation currently. And the fellow art vendors said that they're going around and claiming that it's no longer an expressive matter park. So not sure if that's even a legal thing that's stated anywhere, but they're eliminating all the artists in the park.
Who is, is the NYPD is saying that to you?
Sorry?
Can you clarify who the NYPD is saying that or?
What I'm seeing on Instagram, it looks like it's the PEP officers.
Okay.
So it's just bizarre that we're in the midst of this very progressive meeting. And fortunately, like the largest crackdown is happening.
Okay, thank you. So what was another thing about the, the communication issue between the police officers and PEP officers? Because sometimes they just don't know the rules. Like, for example, yesterday I was performing on the Washington Square Park. And there is a park rule section saying that those distance rule applies for art vendors with tables. And there is a park rule section saying that those distance rule applies for art vendors with tables. And I am a performer, so I was closer to the fountain. The spot I picked because in front of the arch where usually I perform, there were people who were doing like photo shooting and like some like wedding proposal stuff. So I decided not to bother them and came close to fountain. And I already talked with police officers and everything. So, okay, the this specific container. Another day came to me and then like we read the rules. Um, I'm not gonna bother you because you're a performer and like the distance doesn't apply for performer. And, okay, we own agreement. I understood. And yesterday, pep officer came over to me and then, hey, you're too close to the fountain. So I I just told the pep officers that like, okay, I heard very different things from police officers. So could you just? Guy, could you guys communicate with each other? And then they communicated with each other right in front of me and they they came on agreement that like I don't have to move. So that's also, I'm just pointing out that even though like. The change in the distance rule will definitely help, but even though after the rule changed or like. Even with the current rules, people have the different interpretation or assuming, or maybe like not knowing some part of the rules. And I just still see this miscommunication between the pep officers and police officers. So. As you say, like, meeting would be helpful because I need them to communicate with with each other first. Like before they enforce something against artists in the park. Uh, and I see the mark raising their hand, so go ahead.
Thank you. I'm just looking at the clock. Uh, I know it's not my meeting. Um, but I'm looking at the clock and the council member is with us for a relatively short period of time. And there has been some discussion about the need to change rules and some discussion about the need for a meeting. Council member has addressed um his efforts uh to arrange that meeting and unless there's something more to add, that's a great. Great thing to have have him here for, but I think it would be, um, uh, it would be, uh. Uh, a shame if the council member were to timeout without. Hearing whatever it is that the council member wants to share about the prospect for changing rules, the process. Um, I think you've set the stage for it and I just wanna make sure that we hear from the council member since he's giving us his time um in in this forum. Thanks.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yeah, so I can just quickly uh talk about this. There's there's two different ways we can do this, right? We can. Uh, meet with the Parks Department and talk about certain rule changes that can happen in the park. That can solely affect Washington Square Park, right? And not uh any other New York City park. If we wanna go more the legislative route, which is more, I believe, a long-term solution. Then, and then it will, any type of legislation that we enact will potentially affect. Every single New York City park. So that becomes a much harder hurdle to an obstacle, right? Cause we have to talk to every single council member, see how that legislation is gonna affect the parks in their district. And and we also have to get the speaker of the city council to support it, to to have a hearing on it. And so that, you know, if we do go that route, that's kind of be more strategic or more longer term. Uh, and so, but I think the the short term is meeting with parks. Uh, after we understand what are the the clear demands from uh the vendors and the artists in the park. And address some of the rules that they have now. And my office is happy to write a letter to the commissioner. Uh, outlining that and scheduling a meeting with them. You know. Both the stakeholders meeting, which we're trying to organize now, but also have another meeting to follow up on that. With the the particular rules that folks want to see change or or implemented in the park.
Yeah, thank you so much. And for the amplification rule, uh, I have a clear proposal, so. I will just share this right now. So the current park rule allows to. Uh, allows anyone to play acoustic instruments from eight AM to ten PM. It's already written down. And it doesn't specify the decibel amount, so as long as it's acoustic instrument. It doesn't matter. It's like a hundred twenty decibels drums being played from two eight AM to ten PM. So. My point for the amplification is instead of like black and white, yes or no. In current park rule technically says no amplification, which hasn't changed from like ninety seventies as far as I've heard. So it should be modified uh to until up to eighty decibels nine AM to ten PM. Um, and eighty decibels is like not something I randomly come up, like eighty decibels is from WHO standards, which is. Safe to listen for forty hours per week. And there's a list of like, I need to send this later. But like a WHO that just uh gives us like specific decibels amount, like uh what kind of sound is approximately. How much decibel levels? And shouted conversation is already ninety decibels. So. I just so you know that like eighty decibel is quieter than a hundred twenty decibels drum set. Or shouted conversation in ninety decibels. And I do think it's really reasonable. And there was a not, there there was another example of like a day where, uh. The cleaning people were cleaning the fountain with a like a water pressure machine. And that noise from the machine was louder than my speaker, which emits like sixty, seventy bells out in Washington Square Park. So with that proposal, um, I already talked with Max a little bit, like, you know, like our. Question was like where to bring this proposal we have. So could you clarify that with this uh group here, please?
Yeah, I think that would be more of a legislative matter. Um, and, you know, it's. There are some obstacle to it, right? Like, does part of the legislation force officers to have a decibel reader? When they were, when they're out doing enforcement, right? I think there it kind of creates a lot of gray area. And but that, if we go the legislative route, that will affect um every New York City park. And so i- it could get kind of complicated uh when we reach out to other folks, right? So, so I think I know Max has been looking into it um and has been talking to folks in the council just to like. Understand the appetite for something like that. Uh, but, you know, we, yeah, we're we're looking into it to see if it's a possibility or not.
Thank you. And I assume like updates I get from like Max gives me updates on it?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, so now I see Eric is back in the meeting. So Eric is leading, um. Artist action happening in Washington Square Park, including the process happened on July thirty and every. For uh the protest every Wednesday at six PM. So I know we are talking about legislative solutions right now as well. But, uh, Eric, could you give me the updates about what happened in the park today's afternoon? Because I wasn't there and I wanna know the exact situation. Oh, sorry, you need to unmute yourself, Eric.
I'm mute. There we go. Hi, everybody. I'm in Washington Square Park right now. Um. And, uh, exactly what I said was gonna happen thirty days ago has happened today. I can't believe it's so fast. I sort of expected it to take a couple more months, but the uh entire fountain circle is cleansed of artists. It has been expunged. And, uh, and then I was walking around. I did a live video with them. And an artist put up some uh artwork on the fountain and the ground there. And they came up and said, well, so long as he has a table, it'd be okay for him to show his art there, which is a complete fabrication of everything. So we're dealing with lies, unpredictable enforcement, random enforcement. Uh, why have they cleansed out the fountain circle? I've been here for seven years. I've never seen an enforcement push like I've seen in the last thirty days. So I am all for the rules, but I'm also like. Why now? Why today? Uh, we've all been trying to talk about this and um I thought maybe we were having some. Uh, progressive conversations, but, uh, this is where we're at. I'm very upset. Um. I'm not angry. I expected this. I just didn't expect it today on the exact one-month anniversary of us trying to get a resolution. We have two points. We want an immediate relief from this crazy over-enforcement. And we'd like to work long-term with all of you guys to come up with something that works for everybody. And I know that's a long-term hard solution. But, um, what I found in the last thirty days is there is zero appetite. For applying any pressure to hold the status quo as it has been for decades. I have been in this park for years. And I've never seen anything like this. So I apologize, uh, uh, I don't know if this is the report you wanted. But this is the report we have. Nothing that happened in the last week matters. And the only thing that matters today is that the fifty-foot rule. Which I had been told was not going to be fully enforced is now being fully enforced. I'll happily take questions about whatever. It doesn't matter because this is the situation. And until it's not the situation, none of the long-term stuff matters because there won't be artists in Washington Square Park. There'll be poor artists. In Washington Square Park. Thank you. I I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Eric. Um, I think my question to community board to conservancy and Washington Square Association. Is, do you hear any like? Anything about on this issue from like residents? Like, I might ask the same thing, but like, I just wanna know, like, including. The residents who don't want artists to be in the park, if any of those residents exist. I I've never personally heard of those people living around the park, but I just wanna know the exact. Situation or feeling uh the residents around the park having right now. So maybe Grace might need to go now. So I don't know if.
No, sorry, Konami. I was able to move things around so I can stay the whole time.
Right, sorry. Uh.
But I can tell you, I mean, we get, we get complaints um about things going on in the park. We get. Sometimes we'll get noise complaints um from very, very loud amplification. Um, often those are actually complaints about events that are permitted to have that kind of sound. Um, you know, so they're like the one-day concerts, things like that. Um, and then again, the safety stuff, skateboarding. Drug use, uh, you know, unhoused addicted populations in the park. Those are the kinds of things people reach out to us with concerns about. I have not seen anything about performers or artists in the park. We, during the pandemic. Um, you know, during the worst of it, we were getting complaints when there were, you know, racks of clothing that were up. And you like couldn't, you know, could barely walk through the park because there were so many people. We were getting complaints. About not being able to use the park. Um, but nothing, I mean, since that, you know, the summer of insanity. Like those are, those, we don't get those anymore. Um. It's certainly possible people are having conversa, you know, the the staff of the conservancy is myself, one other full-time staffer. Hopefully two more full-time soon. Again, if you know anyone who wants to come work for us, we're hiring. Um. A- and then our our executive director, Will, who's technically a a half an employee, he's, because he also works for Parks Department. Um, our board is much larger, our groups of volunteers is much larger. We've got like a hundred plus regular volunteers, twenty-something board members. If they're having their own conversations, I don't know them, but we are not getting formal complaints into the conservancy.
Thank you, thank you, Grace. Uh, I think, oh, yeah, Washington Square Conservancy person left. Because, uh, she had another obligation. But, uh, for the community board too, uh, does any of the either members? Or people around the members bring up about like complaints about the noise or artists or anything like that?
So, um, I am the district manager, which makes me the the staff of the community board. And most of the time complaints come here to this office, but it is conceivable that people. Know, for example, the chair of our board or the other leaders of our board. Um, they know that they're board members and therefore may speak to them privately. So I can't give you a complete answer that. No one has ever mentioned to Susan, our chair, or the or Rich, the chair of our Parks Committee, for example. Um, about this or that. I will say that the complaints that have reached this office. And to my best understanding have reached. Um, oh, and I should also mention, I host once a month, except in August, something called a district service cabinet. Which is a convening of agencies and uniform services that affect our district. Um, uh, where we brief each other on what we hear and what's going on. Um, and in all of those. So I I I have that source of input and then I also have constituents calling the office saying, um. In effect, the bar downstairs is way too loud or what are you doing about those sidewalk sheds? The council member took them, uh. Took action on that last week, I believe. Um, so, um, in none of them have I heard anyone talk about artists. In the way in which you're using that term. Um, the complaints that we hear most specifically are about public safety. Um, specifically the northwest corner and the open-air drug market that has. Been there since I was in law school, actually, all those years ago. Um, and about what happens when enforcement. Is uh undertaken in the park. Which in the giant game of whack-a-mole just moves the problem from one street to another. It doesn't actually often solve it. Um, so, um, so so folks who live, for example, on Sixth Avenue, from time to time will have concerns about, but it's all about. Um, uh, drug crime and that would that and those things that naturally follow drug crime. So it's a long answer to a short question, but I think that that gives you what you're looking for.
Thank you very much because that was helpful because now it's more like clarified that. W- we artists like don't get direct complaints about what we're doing. And if noise complaint is like as Grace said, mainly for like permitted events. It's unfair for us, like if they're complaining about the events happening with the per, like. So events can happen, of course, because they have permit, but like if they're complaining about. The loud noise coming from the permitted events and then if they're coming on us, it's not making any solution. And we are just unfairly cracked down. Um, so that's what I'm hearing. So, thank you. Uh, I know the Christmas holiday has only eight minutes. So we would like to know, of course, you know, like what you can do and like anything you can do. We, what, all what we can do is like here, like waiting for the updates from you guys. So we will do that. So what you can do and meanwhile, uh, what we can do to for the both. Short-term solution, long-term solution. So if you could clarify those two, again, that'd be great.
I think something your your group or your coalition can work on immediately is sending us the list of recommendations. That you want us to uh talk to uh the Parks Commissioner about. So maybe you can create a a Google Doc. Uh, share it with Max and we can look through it. And if we have any questions, we'll talk to you before we send. Uh, that letter, uh, just to make sure that we're both on the same page on what are the ask are.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, so that's the thing we can do fairly quickly and I think we could start working on that even this week or next week. Some of the legislative solutions might take much longer and Max will give you a follow-up on like. What we're hearing within the council. You know, I think we're not too clear on that yet. It's all, like, it's August, so it's hard to communicate with many people now. So hopefully we'll have a better idea. Uh, maybe late September. Um, and then, you know, we are definitely gonna let you know as as soon as possible. For this roundtable meeting that we wanna set up. Um, and so I think the two short terms are. Creating that Google Doc, sharing your recommendation and on our side figuring out the logistics and dates. For the community meeting. Uh, and and so, uh, yeah.
Uh, do you mean recommend by recommendation is a proposal of the rule changes or something else? Yeah, okay. Thank you. Great, much.
Well, just wanna say thank you, everyone, for for organizing this. I think it's. it's definitely stepped in the right direction, having all these stakeholders on a on a monthly call. And and hopefully, you know, more clarification, education and next, good next steps come out of this. So my office wants to be as supportive as possible. So any questions or anything, just reach out to Max. And I've been talking to Max weekly about this issue, so we'll try to get back to everyone as quickly as possible, okay? Have a great week, everyone.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. So there's some people coming in and out because of other obligations, like Grace is probably out until three P M, but we still continue doing this.
I didn't have to go.
Oh, you didn't have to go?
Yeah, I moved everything around, so I'm here the whole time.
Perfect. Thank you so much. And also, another question I had for Max. Oh, Max is still here, right? Yeah. Sorry. I'm gonna share this video because, so the question itself is simple, but for example, last summer, we had this issue of like you know, like there are like different officers, of course, from NYPD and then like some officers are less aggressive and some officers are more aggressive than others. And there was an issue where like a few like specific officers are more violent than other officers. And I don't know if you followed up with this from the previous person, Ian One. But what he suggested us was like, so whenever we witness those aggressive officers, we can take the officer's name and badge number and then Ian told me that like he can communicate with Six Precinct so that this you know, aggressive officers won't be assigned to Washington Square Park. And at least that was the idea. So I'm not sure if that's something you can do as well. But I'm gonna share the video because that clarifies the situation better. For the technical slowness, I would appreciate your patience around here, I think.
Is something supposed to be playing now? Because I'm just not hearing anything.
Oh, sorry. Sorry, someone said something.
Yeah, I was sorry, I was just asking if something was supposed to be playing because I wasn't hearing anything while the screen was being shared. I don't know if it was just me or. I just didn't hear any of that. I don't know if other people had the same issue.
Yeah, I'm having the same issue.
We're not hearing anything. Okay. Go back to the meeting. Okay, okay, sorry about that. So we had some difficulties. So I'm working on it.
Konami, we're not seeing any video. We're not hearing anything.
Okay. Sorry about that.
Why don't you just skip the video?
I will, yeah. Sorry, that's just the the laptop also froze, so I had a hard time to move things around. Sorry about that. Okay, so I can't play the video. But basically, so this musician was in the video talking about the artist he had to experience because of the music he was playing around five fifteen P M. Or in April last summer. And also after confirming with other performers, like we just, we noticed that like specific police officers were treating the artists in a violent way. So not just against him. So I don't know, I mean, because so far, Max, you're the only window open to the NYPD, it sounds like. Because they didn't respond to Grace and they apparently don't respond to us. So if you could, do you think you can have any communication with them about like assigned, like which officers shouldn't be assigned to the park and all those things? I don't know. The question is.
Yes, I mean, I think if you can send us the, I guess, you know, we'd have to know the names of the officers and the things like that. You know, we can certainly communicate it. We obviously can't control who they assign. And there's also the issue of it's possible these are officers not from the Sixth Precinct and are being sent from somewhere else. Oh yeah, you know, if you can send it to us, yeah, you know, we'll see what we can do on that, you know, on that end. And then I would also, you know, if you know the CCRB, the Civilian Complaint Review Board, you know, it's worth reporting officers through that as well if you think, you know, that they're they're, you know, being too violent or violating rules.
Okay, so you need just badge number and name? Probably do you need any other, maybe like?
Yeah, I think.
Video evidence?
Yeah, if you have the videos, yeah, you know, you can send it to us. Yeah, I can see whatever information you have.
Okay. Thank you so much. Yeah, I think I went through pretty much everything I know, totally. But so if you have any questions to each other, let us know. If not, we can end it. Sorry about the technical issues. I just couldn't share some of the things I wanted to share. Do you guys have any questions to anyone?
No, thanks. I just apologize that you've been seeing the side of my head, but that's because I'm typing notes on this and so they're a little bit. So you you get an unattractive profile.
You have a very pensive side of your head. It's fine.
Yes, and the little red light is on, so I don't know what that means. Anyway, thanks, guys. Appreciate your time.
I I actually have one question if.
Thank you, Andrew.
I'm I'm just curious if, I mean, the answer is probably no, but if anyone has any idea why escalation continues to happen, it seems like someone has to be saying. I just, I I do agree that in the long term, it seems like rule change is the solution. But in sympathy for the people that whose livelihoods are at stake in the very near term. Does anyone have any idea why it continues to escalate and who who might be making that happen?
I mean, one thing I can I can add on that is, you know, when we met with the precinct, you know, their opinion is it's not escalating and it's, so I think, you know, we spoke with them, they they believe, you know, there wasn't an escalation, things have been relatively calm. So I think that's part of where a meeting is helpful, just because obviously artists and vendors have your perspective of what's happening. The precinct has their own perspective. That's the only way to kind of figure out the reality, you know, is to talk about it together, you know. It's not gonna be super productive for you to talk to us and us to talk to them and them to talk to us and us talk, like, you know, that just becomes a game of telephone where nothing is really gonna get done. And so, you know, the only way for you, like a kind of a productive conversation on that, or yeah, to get answers on that is for a productive conversation.
And to piggy, to piggyback on that, Max, because I think you're right. I also think we can't underestimate the the problem that the conflating of the drug issue and the artist issue is causing. You know, that that post article wasn't at all surprising to me. You know, plenty of people don't know enough to see the difference, don't spend enough time in the park to understand, don't get that. It it's such a mixed message issue. I think that's a big part of the problem. So you know, if a a layman on the street says, I don't want any selling of stuff in Washington Square Park, that gets everything caught up in it, even if they mean literal stuff as in like drugs. I do think that's a huge, huge part of what we're seeing.
Thank you.
Okay, Robert.
All right. I wanna answer Andrew's question. And keep in mind, I've been suing the Parks Department for thirty years. I have a lot of experience with Pep and with the NYPD. In my opinion, the reason for the escalation is the messaging in the protest. It's been falsely claiming that the police actions are all illegal, that they are dirty cops. Chasing them around even when they're just walking through the park doing nothing with bells, screaming all kinds of nonsense at them. These are human beings. If you treat them like that, they're gonna get more aggressive. Another part of it is that what is being described as police violence, you're looking at 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 an idea, at a at incidents from the middle to the end instead of the beginning. Most of these incidents become violent when the vendor resists. When they refuse to show I D, when they try to handcuff them and they wiggle out of it or even start fighting with the police. I'm not trying to defend the police. What I'm saying is that there's a cause and there's an effect and it's not a mystery cause. If you keep treating the police as absolutely disrespectfully as they're being treated by this protest and making all kinds of conflated and fake accusations against them, they're gonna get more pissed off and they're gonna do more things to artists when they're doing the enforcement against them. And the other thing is this idea that there's no complaints about the artists. Let me tell you something. I testified at the hearing in twenty ten when these rules were developed. Hundreds of people testify. Every single, every single park conservancy that existed then testified specifically that they had a problem with artists in the parks. They had residents from the different parks testifying how much of a horror it was for them that there were artists in the parks. I'm not saying these people are right to think that, but to imagine that there's nobody complaining and the police are just sending themselves there and brutally illegally enforcing against the artists is completely untrue. And lastly, while a lot of the artists are very inexperienced and they feel that a police officer even talking to them is abuse, is intimidation, is harassment. What the police are doing is they're modifying the rules. They've been doing that for the past month and much longer, actually. They've been barely enforcing the rules. If they enforce the full rules, there wouldn't be a single artist there and it would still be legal enforcement. So to accuse these cops of all these outrageous behaviors when in reality they're actually have been going out of their way to accommodate the artists. It's a false narrative and it inevitably is causing a lot of resentment on the part of those Pep and police officers. I know that's not a popular view, but I think that's the reality.
Any questions? All right, so I'm gonna send another email for the next meeting whenever I'm ready, but I need to keep this recorded with the meeting first. So thank you very much for your time and we will continue doing this. I know it's a lot of hours we're spending here, but hope you have a good day. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Y'all have a good day.